Thank you for your patience, we made it, we made it. I'd just like to begin by welcoming all committee members and members of the public in attendance and those watching on the council's YouTube channel and those watching on the YouTube channel in particular, thank you for bearing with us. And I'd like to remind everyone that the meeting is being livestreamed, so please ensure that you use your microphones when speaking and obviously have them switched off when you're not, just for the for the sound quality. And a few housekeeping rules before we begin. If anyone wishes to use the facilities, they're located at the back of the room in through the reception in the main foyer by the coffee shops. And if there is a fire alarm, please leave the building by the nearest fire exit and make your way to the concourse, which is located just before the multi-storey car park. And any officers present who are due to speak, please make sure you wipe down your microphones once you are finished. Wipes have been made available on all the desks. I can also remind members to put their phones on silent during the meeting as well. And can I start by asking everyone to introduce themselves? If I start on the if I start on the left with you, councillor Brown, and move our way round, is that okay?
Councillor Richard Brown, councillor for Ithornie and Newborough.
Good evening, my name's councillor Lucinda Anderson and I'm the ward councillor for Ravensthorpe.
Hello, my name's Anita Hewson, I'm a service manager within the fostering service.
Hello, my name's Glen Crossland, I'm a foster carer and vice chair of the foster carers committee.
Hi, my name's Shalina Chandu, Quality Assurance Lead for participation and independent visiting.
I'm Sandra Bond and I'm a councillor for the Gunsoar Ward.
Good evening all, I'm Nicole Moyo, councillor for Highgate and Hampstead Ward.
Oliver Sainsbury, councillor for Fletcham and Stangground.
Thank you, I'm councillor John Howard and I'm standing as as chair for this evening's meeting. And for the start for item one, is there any apologies for absence?
Yes, thank you Chair. I'll just start by saying that we do have apologies from councillor Ayers, councillor Brown is in attendance as substitute, councillor Bisbee, councillor Moyo is in attendance as substitute. We also have apologies from councillor Jones, councillor Yazzin and also councillor Lane. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for item two, does any member wish to declare any disclosable pecuniary interest or non-statutory disclosable interest? No, that's a good start, that's a good start, we'll move on. So item three, we're looking at the minutes of the meeting that was held on the 24th of November 2021. And members are being asked to approve the minutes of the meeting held on Wednesday, 24th of November. Can I have a proposal and a second, assuming everyone's happy with the minutes? Thank you. Yeah, brilliant, thank you, thanks for that. And just just as a footnote, by the way, we did notice there is a correction needed on the reference to Unite in the paper, but we are aware of that and we'll get that amended in in the papers as well, so thank you for that. Is that okay? Yeah. And then for item four, we're going to look at the update from the foster carers committee. And can I ask the foster carer committee representative Glen and support officer Anita to please present your report? And yeah, it'd be great just to hear some sort of bullet points of the report and just a summary of the report as well, just to help the members and then we can move on to questions from there, if that's okay, so thank you very much.
So, thank you very much for inviting us along today. So my name's Anita Hewson and I'm the service manager in fostering for the recruitment and assessment part of the service. I'm here instead of Fiona Van Den Hout, who's the head of service, who unfortunately is not very well today, so I'm standing in for her. Just going to ask Glen to reintroduce himself.
Yes, my name's Glen Crossland, I am a foster carer and vice chair of the foster carers committee here on behalf of Mandy Nichols, who can't make it today.
Sorry, I did press it, it didn't actually come on. Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, so we're here today to talk to and answer any questions in respect of the the report that you've all had access to. So the purpose of the report is to inform the committee of activity undertaken by the foster carer committee and to update you all on the fostering service development and also any responses to the foster carer survey. So as Chair has highlighted today, we've actually been asked to go through in a little bit more detail than I think that you would normally be be asked to do. And I think it's really, really important that we just start off with the acknowledgement that the Peterborough Foster Carer Committee's annual general meeting took place in December of 2021, where foster carers were elected and there are some new people in role, of which Glen is is one of them. So Mandy Nicholson is now the chair of the foster care committee, Glen is is the vice chair, and Sue Stepney, which some of you may know, who was supposed to be here today, but unfortunately she's got Covid, so she sends her apologies as well. What I thought would be really useful, and please do guide us, because I'm, you know, aware of the time, we're going to just maybe pick on a couple of the items in the report and then leave the rest areas open for you to to ask any questions. So I'm going to ask Glen to go first to highlight an area.
The areas, the area I'm looking at is relating on point 11, which is the foster carers raise that the government that has provided a £500 grants, which was given to the schools for every child in care. And it was understand that this grant was paid for enrichment activities to aid their wellbeing. There's been some confusion over this between systems and obviously now that we're aligned with Cambridge, sending virtual schools, we've got to get them a little bit more aligned so we can push out the relevant information to the schools so they know what to spend this money on. Personally, from our side, we've had a little bit of issues with schools not understanding what the money can be spent on. It is supposed to be allocated during the PEPE meetings for the children. And we seem to be having to look at it a little bit more retrospectively, as not all of the money has been spent. Children who have moved from one school to another during the lockdowns and Covid times, the money has to be transferred to that school and it's ensuring all this takes place. And so myself and my wife have been talking to Dee from virtual school on Peterborough side, and we've got guidance from Claire Holmes on the Cambridgeshire side. So hopefully, very shortly, we should have this a little bit clearer for people and clearer for the schools, because I do honestly think they truly knew how to allocate some of the money.
As I'm from the recruitment side of the service, I thought I'd just spend a couple of minutes talking a little bit about recruitment in in Peterborough and and the recruitment ambassadors that's that's talked about within this report. You know, there's a national shortage of foster carers, as you know. Covid has certainly changed the marketplace and that's a national picture. Across Cambridgeshire and Peterborough, we, you know, we have seen our numbers declining in the amount of inquiries that we've had, which also has led to the the decrease in in approved foster carers. But what we have done is we've worked with six foster carers, two of whom are Peterborough, and we have, so, six recruitment ambassadors now to work alongside us, which will really, really help us in getting the word out within the community better about our need for foster carers. So hopefully you will see them out and about, they're going to be popping up at events within within Peterborough. And I know that, I think councillor Jones is on on virtual, we met with him the other day and he's actually going to meet with the recruitment ambassadors, which I think will be really, really positive as well. I think another area that I'd just like to highlight in the report, because we've, you know, Covid is still with us and obviously this committee meeting has been impacted on Covid. One of the areas that the foster carers has raised, has highlighted, is the cost of lateral flow tests going forward. And just to kind of reassure you that we are working within the local authorities to ensure that foster carers are classed as essential workers to enable access to lateral flow tests going forward. Glen, is there anything you wanted, no transport was something?
Yes, I will back up that, obviously we were classed as essential workers and we did all get our Covid vaccinations earlier than many and would like to thank everyone for that, so it was very, very useful for us. Transport's highlighted on here and that's been an ongoing problem for a long, long time. Obviously with this new software coming in place, which will hopefully finally improve this, because it's been, it's not just a problem for vehicles not turning up or being able to get hold of transport, it's things often when they're late or dates and times are wrong, the stress on the children is very, 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 very high. They're not always happy with transport, it's a service which we only use in extreme circumstances, but it can be very stressful for a child. Hopefully, yes, this will improve.
Sorry, we're doing a double act with the microphone there to make sure we haven't gotten that on at the same time. And I just kind of want to end really on some of the events that we've got coming up. So we've got a new carer event ceremony, really, coming up in May. Because of Covid, we've not been able to hold this over the last couple of years, so it's going to actually be quite a big event with a lot of foster carers that have been approved over the couple of years. And we will be inviting a representative from the from the council to attend as well. And we've also got our long service wards, which will be happening in the autumn in November. And something that we're really, really wanting to concentrate on this year is children who foster, and by that I mean the birth children are foster carers, and how important it is that we recognise their achievements, because a lot of our children in care get things through the post, get certificates, but actually the birth children don't. So we're going to be doing an event, the sons and daughters event in October. Is that okay? I'm open for questions.
Thank you so much and thanks for going into the detail as well, it's really, really interesting and really appreciated. We've got an online question, if we can start with that, so through the wonders of technology, we'll go over to councillor Jones, if that's okay. I know Ricky is online as well to to handle the questions and delegate where needed, so you're there online as well. So yeah, councillor Jones, over to you, please.
Thanks, John. Okay, fascinating, yes, it was an entirely useful meeting I had with Fiona, Michaela and Anita on the Monday. I'm just slightly confused, I thought that people could get lateral flow, having suffered from Covid for the past two weeks, I'm getting PCR and lateral flow tests on the dot gov and the NHS website. Is there any reason why foster carers can't get hold of them via the same route? I'm slightly perplexed.
We did try today and if you do have Covid, and I know this because myself, I had it a couple of weeks ago, it's not a problem. If you select that you've had those symptoms, you will get tests sent through. I tried today, showing that I hadn't got any symptoms and it said there are none available for home delivery. There are a few centres around, I'm based in Whittlesey and my wife was able to get one pack from them today. Now, one pack is obviously seven tests with five people in the house, that's a day and we're gone.
Can I come back? The thing is, is having gone online, I mean, I don't know what the the strictures are, but I know people who are actually stockpiling the tests, they're not suffering from Covid. People in the household have had Covid, they've set their accounts up and they're reordering them, and I happen to know that there are people who are who are using, particularly for the lateral flow test, which I think you need two negative ones now to to keep going. And I don't think you're breaking too many rules by by doing that. I don't know whether that's, you know, whether I just, because my account's set up now, but I do know people who are ordering them, which I find slightly strange. And I've also seen on social media, people have opted to buy them from Boots. You can't buy them from Boots at Breton, but you can buy them from Hampton and then a shreds load of people have come on and said, yeah, but you can get them online just by going onto the NHS and it actually says, order lateral flow tests online. And I don't think it applies to people who just have Covid.
Thank you councillor Jones. Ricky, do you want to come in on that? So you've got your hand up there, so.
Thanks councillor Howard and councillor Jones. What I was just going to say...
What I was just going to say is that this query did arise from, I meet with, my name's Ricky Cooper, I'm one of the assistant directors for children's services with responsibility for the fostering service. I meet regularly with foster carers and this question came up because it was around expectations, particularly in schools, around lateral flow testing and around the public health advice at the time. So we are working alongside our colleagues, both in public health and in schools, to really think about when people do need to do lateral flow tests. And people are right, obviously. If you've got COVID, I think it's relatively straightforward. If you're not and you are being expected to do frequent tests a lot of the time, foster carers are saying, actually, look, as Glenn points out, there's five of us in the house, one box of those tests will go in a heartbeat. So we are working with our colleagues in public health to seek to address this. And with Anita, I would confirm, you know, the service absolutely prioritised foster carers as essential. Glenn mentioned the prioritisation for vaccines. So I'm pretty confident that we will overcome this in one way or another. It's just a matter of obviously just waiting until the dust settles really and finding out. If there are any foster carers that of course are having significant problems, then we're advising those foster carers to speak to their supervising social workers and we'll deal with it as and when. But we've got a plan in place to resolve it for sure.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions? Councillor Robinson?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your report. I just wanted to ask about section 16 that says foster carers heard that for a recent foster carer annual review, the household reviewing officer attended the foster carer's home and that that was a positive experience. So that's a little bit of a new area to me. Does that mean they hadn't been done in the home before? And perhaps we could hear, you know, what are the positives for carers for it being done in that way?
Mine wasn't actually done that way, so I think it must have been a trial. Our annual review was done online because it was in particular lockdown. But, and that went very, very well. Hopefully it could go forward as an in-house if need be. But the online systems that we've used during lockdowns and the COVID periods, I think have been very beneficial and have worked extremely well.
Ricky, sorry, so you've got your hand up as well. Do you want to elaborate on that as well for us?
Yeah, I can do. Thanks very much. So councillor Robinson, thanks for the question. What I guess I was just going to say is that we've obviously moved to online platforms where we can. The household review is actually undertaken alongside the supervising social worker. So all foster carers have a supervising social worker. When it comes to the point of the household review, the household review is undertaken by our team that do just that piece of work to support the supervising social worker. So the comment made that the household reviewing social worker visited the foster carer is absolutely right. They should visit the foster carer because they're doing the review alongside their supervising social worker. So I just wanted to clarify the process because, you know, foster carers have supervising social workers when it comes to their annual review. Impiloted is a household review social worker that supports the supervising social worker to do it. I'm really pleased to hear that that's a positive experience for foster carers because it has been an area of anxiety for foster carers because household reviews are very important milestones for foster carers. And there was some anxiety when we introduced that a year ago. So that's really positive that foster carers are receiving that positively. And I'm pleased to hear that also.
Thank you very much. Councillor Robinson, are you happy? Sorry, no follow on from that.
Yeah, no, I wasn't familiar with the process, so it was useful to have that background. Thank you.
Brilliant, brilliant. And councillor Sainsbury, you've got a question?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. This may be more aimed at Ricky. It's about section two and then I've got one about section six. Section two about the junior ISA and trust fund. I know it states that we'll be updating due course and staff absent meant that it wasn't possible to progress this, but I just want to check that this is still definitely happening because I think that's really important. And then section six about the stepping out booklet. I know it says how the booklet was created with taking into account young people who had left care, but obviously there are some concerns from the foster carers about the young people having mixed views. So they, you know, clearly they have some concerns. Is there any work going to be happening to engage with the current young people to see if there could be any updating to it? Like I know they've, you know, looking, I know like app and app with budget reasons probably can happen, but just, you know, is there an ongoing engagement process to update it if necessary?
So Chair, if I'm able to. So thanks very much councillor Sainsbury. So I would say that, just to reassure committee members, that obviously savings for our children in care is a high priority. And I know that the service, both the fostering service and the corporate parenting service, of which Michaela as an officer is present for today, is working hard to identify our processes and systems so that we have got savings in place for our children in care alongside expectations for foster carers actually about savings for children that are in care and that we're able to bank them really for our children. So that is indeed a continuous piece of work and, you know, we'll be able to update members about that as we progress that piece of work. In relation to the stepping out booklet, I'm aware that we've got Shamena here from the Children in Care Participation Service and she may be able to add some clarity in relation to how we have sought the views of children in care in completing that. But it seems absolutely reasonable that we obtain the views of children in care that have indeed left care, but indeed are in care. Because actually, the children that are in care will be the exact children that are using this booklet in terms of preparing them for stepping out. So I don't know whether Shamena, you've got anything that you could add in relation to councillor Sainsbury's question?
Sure. So all consultations such as this come to our Children in Care Council. So that's when officers come along with the proposed booklet or guidance and the young people go through it with them. And this is quite a recent activity. I think it was last year. Anytime if there's more feedback or if more views are needed, then officers can come back with the latest version to the Children Care Council. What I'd say is if the feedback is around whether it being a leaflet or booklet or an app, obviously that's beyond the Children Care Council because if that's the feedback, that's the feedback. If it's about content, then I'd welcome them coming back to the Children Care Council with that.
Thanks, thanks Shamena. So in answer to councillor Sainsbury's question, I think that this is a work in progress and the service will obviously pursue that and go back to the children's participation team to seek their further views.
Brilliant, thank you ever so much. Councillor Sainsbury, are you happy to have a follow up or? Thank you. Do we have any more questions from members? No, is it, I'm trying to see if there's any more hands online. It doesn't look that way. So well firstly, thank you, it was a great report and some really good questions as well. So can I ask if we're, sorry, forgive me. I'm off page, sorry. So can I see, as there are no more hands raised now, can I ask that members agree to note the report? Is that okay by everyone? Thank you. I found my place in the end. Thank you very much. Thank you for that. Really appreciate it. And with that, we'll move on to item five, which is the update from the youth voice coordinator on behalf of the Children in Care Council. So if I could ask Shalita Amira to present their report, that'd be great, thank you. So and again, if you could just elaborate a few bullet points for the standing members as well, it'd be really helpful for us as well. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you Chair. So as you can see in front of you, you have an update of some of the activities, the participation team, the Children Care Council, the Children in Charge Youth Club and the Care Leaver Forum have been involved in over the last few months. So first of all, we've been working with our Cambridgeshire County Council counterparts, that was a bit of a tongue twister there, to organise events for the half term for summer, for Easter, et cetera. So most recently, we did the February half term events. That was two face-to-face and one virtual activity. And we have already launched the Easter activities, again, a mixture of face-to-face and virtual activities. We also have, the reason we have the virtual activity is for young people who are placed a little bit at distance, but also for young people who actually prefer to just join virtual activities. There were a couple of highlights in particular I wanted to raise and they're both in relation to feedback from young people. So the first is 4.9 of your report. That is around the new draft of the Children in Care pledge. So for many years, the Peterborough, Peterborough's used a Children in Care pledge that was actually drafted by the Children in Care Council at the time. And we've been asked to review it over the last few years. We've had different feedback on it, some around the design and some around the content. And most recently, we've been able to get all the feedback together from this year and last year and put together a new version of it. So the first change is they don't want it to be called a pledge anymore. They say it doesn't, doesn't make sense to them. Our young people would much prefer it just to be called a promise. And the themes of the promise, there are 10. I have a draft which I will share with councillors after, with members after the meeting. But the themes are keeping you safe, respecting you, being honest, making decisions together, where you live, your health, your relationships, achievements, life skills and keeping you informed. So the children and young people have worked together to amend the language that really makes sense. An example of where they've amended things is around seeing family. So the statement previously was quite unconditional, will help you to see family, but actually it may not be the case that they can. So just putting in the where possible or if possible was enough for the young people to say that means more to me because that reflects the truth really for us. So that's, that's one piece of work they've been doing. Now that the promise makes more sense to the young people, they want to give views on how well we're keeping that promise. So it would be a great way of looking at how we're doing as children's services on an annual basis against this promise. They could just do a star rating against each promise. And the second thing was paragraph 4.13, which was around our ideal worker project. So we've been collecting feedbacks. We did this throughout the summer, throughout the Easter, feedback on what makes the ideal foster care, what makes the ideal social worker IRO and designated teacher. So we've put all the information together, quite excited to take the young people to the recording studio. We had lots of fun recording the audio for the videos. And we're now getting some examples of the, of the animation. We've chosen a digital animation style. They're going to put together the characters for us, the young people are going to approve those, and then we should have the videos within the next few months. We've decided to go for a separate foster carer video and then a separate other professionals video. We're hoping to be able to launch the foster carer video for foster care fortnight as well. And just also 4.14, just to say, we have recently launched a Care Leaver Forum in Peterborough. We always had a Care Leaver drop-in, but this is the forum where just care leavers can get together and discuss issues that are relevant to them. And so already they've had discussions on pathway planning and preparing young people for leaving care. So that was my update Chair, thank you.
Thank you so much. That was brilliant. And with that in mind, can I ask that if there's any comments from members and if you'd like to raise your hand, either in person or virtually, and we will come to you. Councillor Robinson, I'll come to you first. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for the report. Just in relation to 4.11, I wanted to ask a question. I don't know if it has to become a recommendation as such, but it was really interesting to hear that your young inspectors group are looking at the supervised contact centre. And it's one thing that I've wondered in the past actually is, do people find that facility, you know, a pleasant, positive place to go? Because I'd heard a little bit of feedback from one young person that they, they thought it could be a bit nicer, but I thought I won't base it on one person. So it was really interesting to see that the team have been out. So my request was, when it's been written up, is that something you could potentially share with this committee? Because I think it'd be really interesting to hear what they feel about the centre.
Yes, we'd very much like to bring that to this committee. It may be that the young people themselves can present that at the next informal meeting.
Thank you for that. Is there any other questions? I'm looking online. Think we're happy? Okay, I can see, well, I can see there are no more raised hands. So in that case, can I ask members to agree to note the report? Is that okay? Thank you. Thanks ever so much, everyone. Thank you. And we'll move on to item six, which is the annual health report. And if I could ask Catherine, please to present her report. And then we'll ask also if the champion for the portfolio area, councillor Robinson would like to add any comments to the report afterwards, if that's okay. So thank you.
Thank you Chair. So yes, I'm Catherine York, Designated Nurse for Children in Care within the Clinical Commissioning Group. So I presented my annual report and I will take it as read, but I would just like to draw members to a few points, if I may. So some of the positive things within the report are around the partnership working. And I've only put a brief summary in there, but actually just to say that over this last year, that has just gone from strength to strength and it's really positive and working really well with the head of corporate parenting and the service leads and health partnerships. And we meet together with both Peterborough and Cambridgeshire colleagues, so that works extremely well. And that's just invaluable to developments and ensuring the best we can for our children in care. Moving on to health assessments, just to say that we very much in Peterborough have a hybrid model now. And again, that is working well. We will probably move to more face-to-face health assessments, in terms of review health assessments as we move forward. But currently because of COVID persisting, we often have staff who are not able to attend in person or foster carers or children and young people that have been classed as contacts around COVID. So the level of virtual health, review health assessments does continue for the time being. But again, it's balanced and that's all triage. So those that need to be seen really are and would be followed up after the COVID episode if they needed to be seen. And then initial health assessments are face-to-face. Sort of, well, all of them have been, I think, for the last three or four months. So that's, you know, how that is. So we went back to all initial health assessments being face-to-face from June of last year and they have continued in that way. So in terms of initial health assessment performance, there's two things really. There's the issue of performance around our children that are placed out of county. And that was raised by the committee at the November meeting. And then you wrote to the safeguarding lead for the region, for NHSE. And I've put in there that I would give an update because I met with the safeguarding regional lead last week. And actually, the information that I've put into the report from the deputy chair, deputy chief nurse, sorry, for England is as a result of your letter to NHSE. So I think that's really positive. So by writing to the regional safeguarding lead and the Kenny Gibson, NHS So by writing to the regional safeguarding lead and the Kenny Gibson, NHS England, they have together, you know, moved that forward and escalated it. So it's really put that onto the radar, so thank you for that, because that's actually really supportive, not just for Cambridgeshire and Peterborough, but for England as a whole. But certainly from a regional point of view, we're now starting to do considerable work around that. And also, just to say that I'm part of a task and finish group around data related to dental performance. And I've given a really clear outline of the dental position at the moment there. The only other thing I'd really like to draw attention to is the fact that in November, when we met, I raised the fact that our children were disadvantaged in terms of the initial health assessments, because other areas weren't providing such timely health assessments compared to us where we did in Peterborough, because we treated children placed in Peterborough the same as our own. So there wasn't any prioritising system. However, the last two months have seen extreme pressures on the Peterborough service and a high number of referrals for initial health assessments from other areas. So interestingly enough, we find ourselves in a difficult situation of having raised it as an issue to NHSE, but then find ourselves, hopefully it's a temporary position, because we're working hard to sort that, but actually where we are prioritising our own children against those from other areas. But what we're doing is, is our children are still receiving their IHA within 20 days. On the whole, there might be one or two that go into 21 or 22 days, unless there's a sibling group, in which case that might take a little longer. But usually within 25 days, even if it is a large sibling group. So we do that, and then the children that are placed out of area, instead of being 20 days, we're offering an appointment unfortunately in 30 to 40 working days from when they become looked after. However, the two main areas that place children in Peterborough that are asking for IHAs are Cambridgeshire and Lincolnshire. So I've liaised with both those areas and Cambridgeshire are going to endeavour to undertake their own IHAs for the time being. And Lincolnshire, we're working with them to try to sort of triage and work out if they can do some and we can, so that we avoid replicating what so many other areas have. So those were the main key points that I wanted to identify, so I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you so much, and a really interesting, excuse me, really interesting report. And nice to hear some positive action from the November meeting as well, that's really nice to hear. Councillor Robinson, do you want to add anything now, before we move to questions?
Yeah, just to say that myself and Catherine met. As we can't really meet these days, so it's over the phone. But to go through the report, and so I wanted to thank Catherine for that and for Catherine's efforts in trying to resolve this recent pressure in IHAs. And for working with Cambridgeshire and Lincolnshire to see if they can do their bit to lighten the load. And whilst I appreciate it may be a little bit more of an inconvenience for foster carers, some of those appointments are done fairly nearby. I mean, Grantham is, it's better, I think, to drive to Grantham than not to have that assessment done for 40 days. So hopefully, that system will help to alleviate some of the pressure. And then one thing from the report that I put there in my briefing note was about SDQs, because what I tried to always ask Catherine is what do you think the council could do differently that would help what you're trying to achieve? And SDQs was one of those things. So as I'd put on there, it's something I'll inquire with further with the relevant officers here in Peterborough about this goal, about trying to get a smoother system to increase not just the number of SDQs done by foster carers, but also how those that we do in education feed in. Because I know as a designated teacher myself, we have to use the EPEP system and we'll put a young person's score for their SDQ on. But if their score is red, do health ever get to find that out? So it's that kind of loop that I know there's a task and finish group about, but I'll try and play my part in assisting Catherine, the PCC are committed to it as much as Catherine is. Thank you.
That's brilliant, thanks ever so much. Have any members got any comments or questions they'd like to ask on that report?
There's one from me Chair, if you can hear me.
councillor Lane, of course, we can hear you, thank you, yeah, over to you, thank you.
Yeah, I put my hand up, so I'm not sure if it's showing at your end. A question, actually, funnily enough, it was on the last thing councillor Robinson was talking about, the SDQs. I noticed that since the health team have been doing these virtually, instead of face-to-face, the returns have fallen to almost half of what they used to be. Are we expecting this to be a short-term thing, that once we're over the pandemic issues, things will get back to normal? Or should the NHS or whoever be looking to increase the budget for recruitment purposes?
In response to that, the issue is, it was compounded first of all by Covid and virtual working. But the issue is not the health team's ability to send out the SDQs, because that's what happens.
No, it's the returns, yeah.
They send them out to the foster carers. It is about the returns, which is why I now present it in the number sent and the returns, so that you can see clearly. So I think that's what councillor Robinson was saying about, you know, working to improve the returns. So working with colleagues in the fostering team to start to look at that. And I have had some initial conversations around that. And the nurses in the team, the lead nurses, you know, advised that she's happy to do some brief training with foster carers. But it's also about maybe the social workers understanding that they need to get those completed. And that would really be the supervising social worker checking in with the foster carer, have you done it, when's it due, you know, have you received it? Because I see the health assessment's due, because they're sort of, you know, sent out before the health assessment is due. Now, with the return to face-to-face working, for those that are seen face-to-face, there has been a slight increase since last year's on the returns, because some foster carers are asked to return them, you know, complete them at the time of the appointment. They are sent out again and the foster carers do get a reminder. So I think from a health perspective, it's, you know, everything is done that can be done. It's about working with, you know, social workers and the fostering team and Foster Care Association, you know, any way we can to ensure that foster carers understand the relevance of it and the importance of it, and then actually return it and somebody checks that they are returned. Yeah, so that's.
That's fine, I wasn't being critical of your procedures or anything like that. It's just the returns were lacking, so it could be that the paper's too technical for some foster carers. I don't know, perhaps training will help.
Yeah, the questionnaire itself is really straightforward. It's a nationally approved and nationally used questionnaire. And it's one that you don't overthink, it's a case of read the statement and pick the answer. So it's quite straightforward, but it's.
I see what you mean, yeah.
Yeah, but foster carers, you know, they are busy and when they get lots of emails, especially over, you know, Covid times, when it was, you know, at home with children more than they would normally be, pressures were different and it is just getting back into that. So, you know, again, we don't want to criticise foster carers because they're doing a great job. What we need to do is support them, understand what the need, what the issues are, and then support them. And then we can work together much more effectively.
Probably a bit like councillors, we receive the paper, oh yes, I'll deal with that later. And then, there we go, it's gone out of her head again. All right, thanks for that Catherine, yeah.
Thank you, and if I can come to, sorry, Dr Aslam, you've got your hand raised as well?
Yes, I just wanted to let the committee know that Catherine will be unfortunately leaving her role in June. And I would like to thank her personally for doing a splendid job. She's been a great colleague and worked very hard. And I wish her all the best in her future endeavours, I just wanted the committee to know that. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much, that's very sad to hear. But yeah, I think the committee shares your best wishes, so thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I see, is there any other hands? Is everyone happy, is everyone happy online? Yeah, okay, that's okay. So as I can see, there's no more raised hands. Can I ask, we're happy to agree and note the report, is that okay with everyone? Thank you, thank you very much. And thank you for the report as well, it was a really interesting report, thank you for that. And we're on to item seven, which is the performance report. It's the placements of children in care and the scorecard as well. And if I can ask Michaela, please, to present the report, if that's okay, we'd be ever so grateful, thank you.
Certainly, hi, hi everyone, my name's Michaela Berry and I'm the Service Manager in the Corporate Parenting Service in Peterborough. And I'm presenting Myra O'Farrell's report, who's Head of Service in the Corporate Parenting Service. I'm presenting this on behalf of her this evening. So the purpose of her report was to update you about the number of children in care at the end of December 2021 and to let you know about the types of placements that those children are in. So there were 322 children in care at the end of, as of the end of December. 126 were placed with our in-house foster carers. And 116 children were placed with agency foster carers. We got 12 post-16 children living in semi-independent accommodation. We had 19 children that were placed with family or friends as connected person carers. We had six children who were living with their parents but still considered to be looked after because the care order was still in place. There were seven children that were placed for adoption and five children placed in residential educational placements and 55 children placed in residential provisions. Also, I just highlight a couple of things on the scorecard. As you can see, our statutory visits appear to be underneath target. In reality, that kind of refers to the impact of Covid, where sometimes our visits have been out of date because household members have had Covid, for example. And we may have done a virtual visit within timescales, but that doesn't count in our figures. That will tell you why that figure is lower than we would want it to be right now. Also, just wanted to mention quickly about placement stability, which as you can see is still well within the targets but has dropped, which is something we keep a very close eye on. Placement stability is very important to us in the Corporate Parenting Service and we take this very seriously and we kind of put a whole string of meetings in place the minute that there is any issues with placement stability. So we are working on that. I think what this represents is kind of a national problem with the number of placements available for children in care, which does impact our ability to match children with placements, which then has that knock-on impact of them not being as stable as we would want them to be. But just to reassure you, that's something that we keep a very close eye on. And that's the only things I might highlight for you this evening, but happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for that. And if there are any questions or comments from members, if you can raise your hand or your virtual hand, and we'll come to you. Has anyone got any questions or comments? councillor Lane, online, so my apologies, I've got you now, councillor Lane, sorry if you can.
Yeah, thanks for that. Michaela, thank you for the report, but can you just clear something up for me? It's my understanding, we received a report that was requested, or an update that was requested from Children in Education Committee, Pauline has sent it out. And someone somewhere has said that, let me get the figures again, there's 231 out-of-area placements. Now, when we get your reports at every formal meeting, they seem to be on average somewhere in 130s. Is that the definition that's not clear enough, as out-of-area? The reports, your reports say out of the city boundaries. But this report said, that Pauline has sent in, said it was out of area.
Yeah, I don't know Ricky, if you've got any information on this. I do know another confusing aspect is some of the non-in-house foster placements are within kind of 20 miles, which is where we, you know, look at whether children are placed close to home or not. So I think that has caused a bit of confusion in this data as well. But yes, I think we definitely need to look at those figures, don't we, and figure out.
Yeah, because now that we seem to be working sort of hand-in-hand with Cambridge, we really need to get the out-of-county figures possibly.
Yeah, thank you for raising that, I'll get hold of that report.
If you check with Jenny Good's, she provided the information. And it was 374 children in the care of PCC, 231 out-of-area, of which 92 were still within the Cambridge borders.
Okay.
So that could be it. And just one extra, if nobody's picked it up yet, on your scorecard, the headline figure reads 322, but in the graph for December, it reads 348. So where's the anomaly come from?
So. I don't know, I think the 348 might have been the average for December and the 322 might have been the last day of December. But again, I'll need to double-check that.
Okay, yeah, just for future purposes, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thanks very much, thank you Chair.
Thank you, if I can come to councillor Sainsbury, please, if that's all right?
Thank you. I was actually going to ask about the 322, so it'd be good if we could get some clarity on that. But my, can I remember we discussed this last time, as I'm sure some members will remember? And some members had concern that we weren't meeting the target. But I remember, I think Nicola said that, you know, it'd be worrying if we were too low. You know, because we do have a duty to care for the children, so obviously it'd be worrying if we had too little. But it does look like over the last year, the number of children in care does seem to be dipping. Do you, very slowly, do you think that trend's going to continue?
So do you want me to come in councillor Howard, Chair?
Yeah, thank you Ricky, that would be great.
Thanks councillor Sainsbury. I mean, I think it's a very valid point, and I know, because I've been with the council now for a year, so I do remember it being discussed prior to this. And I mean, what I think we can say reassuringly is that certainly, as confirmed in the June focused visit in Peterborough, is that the children that we have in care are in care for the right reasons. And, you know, that's reassuring for members to hear. The numbers are low and what I would say in response to that is that we've got a very effective family safeguarding model that's working in Peterborough. And there's two aspects of that. So the family safeguarding model is working really hard in terms of determining who comes into care, because we're working with families really robustly in terms of giving them opportunities to make those changes before children do actually enter care. However, what we are seeing is that the children that are entering care have got more vulnerabilities. So they are more, they're generally older children often. They're often part of sibling groups. So when we bring children to care, they're probably part of a sibling group of three or four. And that does make placement finding relatively difficult. So, I mean, there's two points, well, there's three really. First point is that we need to check the data to make sure that it's not 348 and 322. My theory about that is that we know that there are some challenges in relation to the system about children that are adopted. So we know that we've got some children that are adopted that we are still counting as looked after. And what, again, I would say about those children is that they are adopted, they're with their adopted families, but there is, the system just needs to catch up. So once the adoption order is made, the system needs to catch up. So this figure, the headline figure, I would suggest is probably right, because actually, if my maths are correct, it's probably, because Peterborough's performance in adoption is very, very good. So I would suggest that some of these children are adopted children and that they're being taken out of the equation of children that are looked after. But as Michaela says, we'll find that out. The second point is, in relation to the family safeguarding model, the fact is that all the children that are coming into care in Peterborough are the right children. And we're seeing that, you know, that is. And we're seeing that, you know, that is on par with our statistical neighbours. So we're not, we're not overly worried about that. What we have seen is we've seen child protection numbers rise. So we're working with more children on child protection plans. And and the possibility is that, because, you know, form and function. Those children on child protection plans possibly will end up coming into care if we can't effect change by intervention. And so we're reassured by that is what I would say councillor Sainsbury.
Thank you, Ricky. Yeah, thank you ever so much. Councillor Robinson, over to you.
Yeah, just to follow up on that really with Ricky. So, yeah, you know, we would see lower numbers of children in care. And if the family safeguarding model was working really well. But do we have a kind of a metric or a system that we can measure that that really is the case and not just wishful thinking? Because, you know, it could be a case that we're setting the bar far too high for children who are at CP level. To actually move into care and and that's why the numbers are becoming lower. I mean, I hope it is because the family safeguarding model is working really well to to keep young people out of care. But how do we measure that and how can we be certain about that? And, you know, as a committee, what should we look for? What metrics should we ask for? And to know that's the case, it's reassuring to know that the number of children, the children we have in care are here for the right reasons. But I do worry about some who could potentially slip through the net.
Councillor Robinson, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a valid point and one of which, you know. Officers would be able to provide reassurance to members through a variety of mediums. So the family safeguarding model has recently been evaluated. And I think there's some more information to come out of that. I don't have in my portfolio the family safeguarding teams. But as part of the corporate leadership team responsible for children's services, I know that there is some work being done. Certainly the DAF has looked at that and is due to publish some of those findings soon. So we can come back to you in that regard. In respect of the numbers of children that are coming into care that, I guess is what you're saying, is that. We we probably don't know about or the ones that probably, it's a, it's a valid question. We've got various internal systems that are in place. So independent reviewing officers are reviewing child protection plans. If they think that thresholds should be higher than they are, then it's their role. As they are independent to scrutinize the care planning for children, that they would raise that, they would escalate that. We're also an authority that has a very good reputation in relation to quality assurance and audit. So again, it could be that we provide some of the most recent audits, particularly in relation to children. That are in need of help and protection. That may be another strand. And again, what we, what we do regularly is we compare ourselves to our statistical neighbours. So, excuse me, children that are in care. Is measured by per 10,000 for the statistical neighbours. And you'll have to forgive me, but I can't, I can't, I can't remember what Peterborough is, but it's not. It's, there's not a trend that it's outside of our statistical neighbours. In actual fact, it's on par. It's not slightly less. But again, I'm happy to provide perhaps a briefing note to the Chair if that would be sufficient or helpful.
Thank you ever so much. We're happy with that. And councillor Boyer, you have a question for us?
Yes, I do indeed. Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the report. I've got a short question in relation to section 10.3 of the report. I appreciate this is an ongoing process, but I was just interested in finding out. How the recruitment campaign is going for foster carers. Who are focused in attracting specific groups. And just really interested to find out if we've been able to gain some engagement. And if we have any figures of of any sort of entrance, I suppose, or any individuals we've managed to get on board. Thank you.
Chair, would you like me to answer that question?
Yeah, Ricky, thank you. If you can, thank you.
That's fine. So 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 I think it's, it's really pertinent that we've got Anita Huson. Who is our service manager, who leads the recruitment team that is responsible for this. I mean, I'll, I'll maybe come to her in a second, but firstly, just to. Raise really that Peterborough continues to have challenges around recruitment. And again, this is a national issue locally and nationally. What I would say is that we have got a very packed full calendar of events that are taking place over. Certainly the next year to really celebrate the work of foster carers. Glenn also obviously is in the actual room, not the virtual room. So he he's a good, and we've got our ambassadors and of course our ambassadors are going out and spreading the word. In terms of numbers, the council do struggle with getting inquiries. And again, if you compare this, because we are a shared fostering recruitment service to Cambridge here. Obviously the numbers are smaller because the demographic of Peterborough is more compressed. So we're, we're not overly worried about that, but we are worried about obviously having enough people thinking that. You know, that they want to be foster carers. And the council is working hard to encourage people to pick up the phone and do that. So I would certainly encourage people, members and others. To 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 celebrate that and to guide people to the council's website. To pursue that. But we are doing everything that we can. We're refreshing some of our branding material. We are also launching some initiatives, new initiatives for foster carers to attract them to the council. So I'm confident that we're doing everything that we can. But anything that yourselves can do to support us, because I know that we've always had continued support from members, would be gratefully received.
Thank you very much. Is it, oh, thank you. Please come in. Thank you.
Hi there. And I thought I might get asked this question, so I I've written myself a couple of notes just to to remind me. So from April until the end of February, we had 71 inquiries to become foster carers in Peterborough. And we have actually approved 15 households and we've got six currently in assessment and that was to the end of February. I know that we've had some more applications this month and I know that there's also been. Some carers that have gone through panel for approval, but I've not counted those in in the data that I've got today. Also, we're very much aware in our campaigns that we are our target groups, of which teenagers are 10 plus. Is is an area that we really need to be concentrating alongside siblings, alongside children with additional needs, emergency carers, et cetera. So within that, we have gained 27 beds within Peterborough through our recruitment. And of those 27 beds, 15 beds were for young people aged 10 to 18. So that's really, really positive actually, because what the trend tends to be is that applicants want to care for younger children. Sometimes it's their own confidence, sometimes it's genuine like and need that they want to care for younger children. And we want to do some work around kind of understanding people's reasons for that. Because a lot of the applicants that we get, you know, have got a lot of experience that they could care for older children. We've got a campaign out currently, I don't know if you go, if you're on Facebook, TikToks, any kind of social media, it'd be great if you could like us and pass that on. We have got our month campaign in terms of LGBTQ plus currently. We were on BBC, Radio Cambridge, yeah, last week, I think it was, the end of last week. And which was really, which was really great. And we are busy now starting to look at our campaign for foster care fortnight.
Which is in there. Thanks, Lenny. So that's really helpful.
Thank you. Thanks ever so much. And councillor Sainsbury, you have a question?
It wasn't a question, it was a comment. It was just to say, I've been, I just wanted to congratulate you because I've been really impressed with, and I'm sure other members have, with the recruitment campaign. And I'm, I've been really, it's been really pleasing to see that you're busting the myths. Because I've seen, you know, like single parents can foster LGBT and I think that's, that's really good. And hopefully you have more people from those groups come forward.
Brilliant, thank you. Thank you. Do members have any more comments or questions? Thank you. I just had a quick one, if I, if I may sneak a question in. I was just looking at the length of time children have been in care and I can see there is a, there is a big bulk. 93 that have been in care for one to two years. And my question really is, does that, does that add a demand to the service? Or is that at that length of time, are they already in what you'd call very established care? And therefore doesn't put a pressure on those coming in new to the service? Because I could just, there's a big bulk there. So I just wondered if that's more established care and whether that has any knock on effect? Or whether that is just an ongoing, most of those are already in an ongoing setting?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer that. I I think, no, that, I mean, we kind of forecast quite well for kind of numbers coming through. So we can ensure that our social workers are not kind of overloaded. But no, I think, I think because we don't know the age range of those children, like Ricky said, some, we've got some children who are coming to care much later. So they're only spending a couple of years in care. And but equally, we would like to think that children who've been in care at for one to two years at that point, especially, you know, the the younger children. Are in stable, permanent placements by that point.
Thank you. Thank you ever so much. But I can't see any more raised hands. So on that basis, can I ask members to agree and note the report? Is that okay for everyone? Thank you. Thanks ever so much. It was a really good report as well. Thank you for that. And item eight is members' issues, where we ask for, for members who are not part of the core committee to come forward. As anyone, anyone who's an elected councillor has corporate parenting responsibilities. And they're invited to come along and raise any issues they may have. I can't see any members in person or online, but we always actively encourage members to come forward with that. So, so as, as I can see no one present, we'll move on from, from that item. And as it's the last meeting, would you believe, of the municipal year? I was really hoping I'd say that right. I think I've got away with it. I'd like to share just a message from, from councillor Bisby, who's our Chair, who sadly can't be here tonight. And it's just to, to thank all the officers, the members, the champion members, foster carers. And the Children in Care Council for all their hard work and contributions to the meetings in this municipal year. And also, as a side note from me, I'd just like to, you know, everyone who, you know, we, we have a very good membership on this committee. And those who can't be here in person tonight, I wish them all well and hope they're back to health soon. Because they've all played a big part in in this committee the last year. Yeah, so thank you to everyone from, from my behalf as well and wish everyone well in the meantime. And the next meetings for the new, they're going to make me say it again, municipal year. Will be agreed at the annual council in May. So, yeah, we look forward to seeing everyone back soon. So thank you, everyone. So with that, I'll close the meeting. Thank you very much.